...Commissioners Meeting, September 19th, 2013, at 7:05. The first order of business is the prayer and the pledge. Those who would, please join us. Just join me in prayer. Lord God, thank you for this day. Thank you for the cool, crisp air. Thank you for the opportunity to be free and American. Thank you for the ways that we go about our evening, our meeting, that we have all the citizens at heart, that we look at the details, and we make answers and suggestions that are positive for the whole. Bless each heart and hand that's represented here this evening. May their homes be blessed. We ask this in your son's name, Jesus. Thank you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Next item up is approval of the agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
Mayor, I'd like to make one deletion and one addition. Under Old Business, Item D, the gun range has been asked to be deferred, so it goes to committee, and then they will put it back on after the committee meets. And if we could replace that with the discussion and/or action on the Triangle School project.
So 7D being deferred and 7G being added. Discuss and/or action of Triangle School?
That'll be fine, yes ma'am.
The Triangle historical property or the actual school? Do you want to specify?
Entire project.
Would there be any other additions, deletions? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is citizens' comments. We have Ms. Victoria Fuentes. Please come to the podium. You have three minutes to share your comments or questions. Welcome.
Well, I read the revised ordinance, Annual 7, keeping up chickens, and I'm still frustrated by this revision. By keeping chickens out of the city limits does not in any way hamper the longstanding traditions of Tennessee agriculture. Fairview still has farms and land that can accommodate chickens. The former Board of Commissioners that established the current ordinance had the common sense to see that chickens do not belong in the city limits. Apparently, they agree that there are enough farms and larger acres in Fairview that can accommodate them. At that time, Fairview was more rural than it is today, yet those commissioners had the sense and the perspective to exclude chickens within the city limits. I don't see that same common sense being used today. We should be moving forward, not backward, and setting standards for the city. It also worries me that unwanted animals, such as coyotes, will be prowling around more frequently. The farm behind my subdivision had prize-winning chickens and rooster. Unfortunately, the coyotes got to them. Having coyotes that close to my house is uncomfortable, and adding more chickens within the half acre that is proposed really troubles me. I would prefer that the acreage be changed to one acre or more to give additional space between homes. I do not want to drive along Highway 100 or other streets and see chicken coops in backyards. Where is the beautification in that? Some residents oppose it, and some are for it. Some are born and raised here, and others are newcomers. But what is more important is that the decision is based on what is good for the city and where you want to take the city next, not where you were born or raised, or who you know, and certainly not for political reasons. The city has pretty high standards for new businesses coming here. Why do you want to lower the standards within residential areas? I hope you will reconsider this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. John Cherry.
Good evening. I'm here to report on our, for the Chamber of Commerce, our activity here this past weekend during Nature Fest. I want to thank the city for allowing us to use the nature park for this event. This was the 29th annual, as you know, Nature Fest, and the weather was just absolutely beautiful. We couldn't have asked for a more perfect day. Our theme was fantastic. We had a great foundation to build upon with our patriotic theme. I want to thank all five commissioners were there, along with your staff, and we had Fairview's finest there. And so, we want to thank everybody that participated. We, I'm not sure about the count, the people that were there, but we, you know, we've heard in the past, there's been between 4,000 and 6,000 people attending the event. We heard that there was at least 1,000 cars in the parking lot, and there may have been some turnover there during the day. And also, people walked in and parked in other places outside the park. So, we're estimating that we had at least 6,000 people at our event. I know that the food vendors sold out. They were extremely happy. We had about 80 vendors there. Everybody was happy. We had positive feedback from everyone. You know, I didn't hear any negative comments from anybody. I'm sure that, you know, you can't please everyone, but I just heard, just everybody just seemed to be thrilled. And so, we're very pleased. We just wanted to thank everybody, our sponsors. We, our largest sponsors, Williamson Medical, Walmart, Publix, the Fairview Observer, my company, Wood McDonald's, Fairview Dental, Messick Chiropractic, You Heavenly Dog, Hickory Home Barbecue, Signs and Wonders, Varden's Body Shop, Middle Tennessee Electric, Alexander Chevrolet had a couple of cars there, Full Service Insurance, Walker Books, Angela Walkup State Farm. She was there all day, working in the chamber booth. Our state representative, Jeremy Durham, Senator Jack Johnson, Marsha Blackburn, our congressman, Fairview Liquors provided the T-Rac, the Titans mascot, APC Insurance, the Fairview High School, JRROTC, and their band, and also the middle school and high school choir. There was about 180 students there. We'd like to thank the National Guard for the rock climbing wall, Farm Depot for providing the bales of straw for seeding and for the hayrides, Pizza Hut for donating food for our volunteers, Jade Walk for the same, the Fairview Boys and Girls Club, they ran the Crafty Critters tent, Set Free Nashville Church provided the sound, Fairview Masonic Lodge for the clowns, Fairview Tac Wando for demonstrations, Williamson County Parks and Recreation provided about 24 cases of water, the LDS Church provided face painting and volunteers for parking and gate duty, the Boy Scouts for the Monkey Bridge, Country Cafe, Great Outdoors University, Grumpy's Bail Bond for golf carts. And I'm sure I missed somebody. I know Stuart, you and your son provided entertainment at History Village, and Commissioner Sutton was, you know, running handicap people back and forth to their cars with the golf carts. And the mayor, of course, did the presentation and the opening ceremonies. I know Brother, Brother Ressell, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm at church here. You were there at the crack of dawn. I know you got there before I did, and I know Patty Carroll was there as well. I saw everybody there. So, we really appreciate all the participation. It takes many hands, makes light work. Everybody put their shoulder to the wheel and made this a great event. I'm just, I'm amazed how successful it was. It was really, really great. We have a suggestion from Commissioner Ressell that we combine next year's event with a 5K run that would benefit the Donna Bledsoe Scholarship Fund, which I'm going to present to the board, and I think that's a great idea. Perhaps we can raise this turnout to, up a notch, maybe to 10,000. We might have to beef up some of the infrastructure a little bit to accommodate that kind of a crowd, so we'll talk about that later. Thank you very much.
Amazing. Thank you very much. I do agree. I concur. The day was a red-letter day for Fairview, and everyone stepped up. That's what makes us a great community. Thank you. We had no other citizens' comments. We'll move along to awards and recognition, and my statement there was to thank the chamber for the great Nature Fest. So, does any of the other board have any other awards or recognitions this evening?
I'll go and put this out there. The Masonic Lodge is having a barbecue and chicken dinner on October the 5th from noon till 5:00 p.m. Adults, $10; children, 10 and under, are $5 as pork barbecue and chicken and all the fixings, so it'll try to turn out to good cause.
Any other public announcements? The next item, six, is 6A, the minutes for the September 5th public hearing.
Mr. Approve.
We have a proper first and second. Would there be any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. 7A, and Old Business, discuss and undertake action on bids for new police vehicles. Chief Harris.
Yes, what I need is permission from the board to take bids on the vehicles and the equipment.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a few things that I wanted to ask. It was a closed bid process, correct? And y'all had two, and so, we're going to start again. But I was wondering why we did close? Why couldn't we do an open bid process? And then, also, within 200 miles, there's, let me see if I get the number right, we have 25 Ford dealerships. Why don't we submit to all of them and give them an opportunity to request?
Well, we advertised the bid in the paper. If they want to bid back, that's up to them. I know for a fact they've got people looking for those bids to be processed in every city municipality.
Yeah.
So, to me, they have the opportunity to do it. And closed bid process, is that not the way we've always done our bids? Larry?
And we're not always done our bid process on a closed bid process?
I don't think it's a closed bid. You advertise the bids. You have to advertise the bids. When you're talking about closed bids, are you talking about a negotiation?
No. So, the bids are basically open?
Yeah, and anyone could attend the opening, couldn't they?
There are two types of bid processes. There is a sealed bid, which is what we use, where a deadline is given, and people submit their bid in an envelope, a sealed envelope, and then the bid is opened and they are read into the record. Or there is an auction bid, where you have, you would invite all of those people to show up on X date, you would set a minimum bid, and then you would allow them to literally conduct an auction in here. Most government agencies do not deal in auction bids because you don't have the ability on the spot to check whether or not the person can deliver what they're bidding for, and is possible that you can run that auction process multiple, multiple times. So, most government agencies use the sealed bid process to conduct their business.
To conduct, to change my words on that.
There's nothing wrong with-
Most of our bids have been sealed bids, is that correct?
There's nothing wrong with that process.
And they're all open at one time.
It complies with state law. Right, but you have to open it. I mean, it's a public open. When I think of closed bids, I think of, you know, negotiating things where nobody-
I don't know of any such animal, closed bid.
That wouldn't be legal. But the sealed bids, the way you're talking about advertising, sealed bids come back and read into the record, complies with the state purchasing process, and I can see where the own could go into chaos.
Turn into a nightmare.
But we're not-
I don't know of anybody that uses that. I don't say anybody doesn't, but I don't know of anybody, government entity that uses it.
Only for getting rid of surplus.
Yeah, the surplus was a different story. But I don't know of any government entity that uses that. I mean, there may be some. I won't say that there's not, but any that I've ever dealt with used the sealed bid process.
So, you're saying it's not possible to do an open bid process where everybody comes in, you see, you can see whatever they bid before the date?
No, you can't.
Okay, well, like-
No, you can't. You've got to either open them all or let everybody come here and shout them out at one time.
Okay.
You can't do that. Private entities can.
But you can, you can notify all the Ford dealerships-
Oh, you can send it. You can send out-
And let them know you're doing it.
You have to advertise it in the newspaper, and then you can send it out to everybody that you know of in the United States if you want to. But that's being ridiculous. But I mean, if the board said, "Send it out to everybody in a 50-mile radius, 200-mile radius," you take your little protractor and draw a 200-mile radius, but the danger you run with that is, if you overlook somebody, then somebody comes back and says, "Well, I've been here for 800 years, and you overlooked me." That can cause you a problem.
Big problem.
It's not intentional, but, you know, if you put it out and it's advertised and I don't read it, that's tough. It's out there. It's where you can see it. But if I start sending it to individuals, you always run that risk of somebody coming back and saying, "You played favorites. Everybody knows I'm here. Of course, I know I'm here." But the people that are sending it out just honestly overlooked it. I've been involved in one of those, and it's not, it's not pretty.
I don't, I don't know of anybody that really solicits bids like that to any of the companies.
Okay, I was just trying to think, are we getting everybody possible around to maybe drive the price down and get the best bid? But, you know, you say-
That's a great thought, and it's very fair, but I can see where somebody, if they didn't get a bid, didn't get an invitation, says, "Well, you know, I didn't get one. Why did you leave me out?" And then you come back and say, "Well, to be fair, we got to throw them out and go back and get this one." Then somebody else does it, and you never get anything purchased.
Has it not been other people's experience that most of the folks that bid on these kinds of contracts have a sales/lease type-
Yes.
-item that, whose job it is to search for these kinds of bids?
I think every car dealership is required to have that.
That's been my experience.
We had a citizen here this evening that personally spoke between, I can't remember, between seven and 11 dealerships to tell them about this, and we ended up only getting two. One of them didn't qualify, and the other one was late, so neither one of them, and whether those were ones he contacted or not, I don't know. So, we had a citizen actually did that for us, which would be a whole lot better than the government doing it and leaving somebody out.
Right. Well, that's good to know. Thank you, whoever did that.
We have a proper motion and second.
Yes.
The only thing I would ask, is this the first time that we've ever bid out for vehicles? As far as rhetorical-
No.
We can go with state bid. I can go with state contract, and you don't have to bid.
And the only reason I ask that is we're going out for the third time to get bids, and it makes me think, have we, is there not a procedure?
No, this will be the second time.
Well, no, the first time we were presented, Captain Sutton presented us with a presentation, PowerPoint and all, of the bid of some company that orchestrated our original vote.
Yes.
So, that was one, and then this was the-
Second.
Second. So, we're going to bid for a third time.
Yes, because-
That would be my only question. Is there not a policy and procedures of how we bid large items for vehicles or equipment?
And we're learning. And the police department is learning, because all our vehicles have been bought by the drug fund. Has nothing to do with the general fund.
Okay, well, making good notes, and that way, it will be something of a process.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
That's always a healthy thing.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a learning curve. It's a learning curve.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Item 7B, discuss-
Mayor, can I just ask one thing? Was, what's the, 22 days from today?
Disagreement on that, as on the paper.
Yes. What would that be?
As we get it in the paper, we do see-
No, it's not too late. We're going in tomorrow.
We can try.
Just give us the date back, so it's as close as possible, so we don't keep running it out there. Thank you.
Item 7B, discuss and undertake action on the money received from the Run Wild event in the park. Ms. Buie?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We received a check for $241 from the Run Wild event. That was our 25% of the profit. And when we approved to have the event, there was the discussion that we could possibly put this money in the special park fund for the grand entrance. So, I'm just looking for guidance. Do you want this money to put in that special fund, or do you want it to go in the regular park fund?
Now, make a motion. We put it in that fund.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is any money, I'm sorry, be out of order. Is there any money been added to that fund since we turned it over?
No, sir.
No.
Not since I've been here.
Thank you. 7C, discuss and undertake action on setting type of payment to the members of the various boards and commissions. Commissioner Sutton?
Bring this back up again. I know we had some discussion on it once before, and I really don't know where we were left at. Does anybody out there know what it was? We were asking for a payment process for each meeting that's called, for the subsequent boards, other than the planning commissioner, regular board commissioners, in order to encourage more people, in a small way, to partake and to join these boards that we have, because when we have a board opening for something with 7,000 people in the city and we get two applicants, there's something wrong with that. That extremely limits the choice that we have to make a quality judgment on who gets on these boards, and some of these boards, well, all the boards are extremely important. So, that was the motion that I was making, that we selected and do that for each, each time a meeting is called, that we give that stipend to those individuals that are there. And the stipend, what, did somebody have me on it? Was it 25 and 45? 20 and 40?
For the chairman was-
I thought it was 25 and 40.
Forty, yes.
25 and 40. Forty for the chairman on it, because they do have to do extra work and-
And 25 for appointees.
Twenty-five. But that would be my motion. Chris, is the budget, the money in the budget?
Yes, sir. We allocated $5,000 in the budget for that process.
Do you anticipate it going over that amount this year?
Since this is the first year we're in-
Compared to last year's meetings.
Oh, well-
I think it would be very close, just what I looked at on it.
It depends on exactly who gets it and-
We had 20 meetings that we weren't expecting. It's going to change, but, well, we do have $5,000 allocated.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And when you asked the question about in the budget, is that the entire draft in the budget, or just the stipend of boards?
That is just the stipend of the boards in the budget. We made a, because this was discussed in a workshop, we added that line item to the budget as a starting point of 5,000.
Okay, the item under 6-20-204, H3, is that included in the budget already? That's not the board, that's missions.
That, the mayor, the salary that the five of y'all make is already in the budget as a separate line item, yes, ma'am?
As a separate line item.
As well as the planning commission. You're in one line item, planning commission's in another, and the stipends in a third. Sorry, I misunderstood.
Mayor, there are some boards that you can't give a stipend to, that you can only pay their expenses by statute.
And of those boards represented in this draft, that needs to be addressed?
Yes, ma'am. In the opinion, the Parks Commission, the Beer Board, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and the Tree Commission can only be reimbursed their expenses by state statute. They cannot be paid a stipend. It would be a misappropriation and a violation of the provisions of the powers of the board to do that, because the statute specifically says that you can only pay those that they authorize. They authorize payments to the Board of Commissioners by statute, the Planning Commission members by statute, Board of Zoning Appeals by statute, and the Industrial Board. They also, the state statute also says that if, in the event, a person serves on both the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners, that the amount of money they receive from the Planning Commission will not by statute be added to what the Board of Commissioners make. Any others, they would, and it would exceed what the statute allows the commission to be paid. There is a way to correct that, and I pointed that out in the, in the opinion, but you can't do that while this board is sitting. There would have to be some action taken by this board prior to 2014, but it couldn't be effective until 2016. I guess it is when the last person who's sitting on the board would be standing for election, or a new person would be there. The people who are prohibited by statute from receiving pay, the board authorized them to send a request to whomever the board directed, it'd probably be the CFO, for their monthly expenditures of coming to the meeting, and that is authorized. But to pay, to pay those people who are not authorized by statute a stipend is a violation of state law.
So, if we authorize the payment up for each individual, for each regular member, up to $25 reimbursement for cost, and chairman up to $40 for cost, that'd be acceptable?
No, sir. It would have to be their actual, their actual expenditures.
I said up to.
Yeah.
Saying if it goes over that, you have to pay-
If it goes over that, you, if it goes over that, then, you know, if it goes over that, then they would have to get approval for that, but you could authorize payment up to that amount.
Up to that, that's what I was asking.
But it couldn't be paid, they'd have to submit a voucher, a request to be paid.
It's making it very difficult to get, bring in some more people.
It, there was a case in which-
And if it was strictly voluntary, and I don't do it for the money, I don't know anybody up here that does it for the money, nobody else would do it for the money, but it helps offset some costs, which is what we're talking about.
I don't, I don't know why the legislature chose to do that, but, but they did. There was even a case where a county judge, I believe it was, the board authorized that he, we're just going to say he has this much expense per month, and they came back and said, "You can't do that. It's got to be actual expenses." Now, you could authorize the payment of actual expenses up to an amount of 25 and 40, if that was the wishes of the board, but to authorize that actual amount as the board declaring that as being actual expenses, we can't do that.
Don't the state of Tennessee Legislature body have a stipend process?
They have, they have what they call per diem, but that's for the state legislature.
Oh, okay. Just period.
They also have a provision that can't be stopped by the police on the way to legislative meetings.
During session period.
So, who would we be able to rule?
You would be able to pay the members of the-
Number four and number eight.
The Board of Commissioners, the Planning, Planning Commission members, Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Industrial Board.
Right.
Those are the only two that you would pick up.
Right. You would not be allowed, other than the actual expenses, the Parks Commission, the Beer Board, Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and the Tree Commission, and why the legislature chose to leave them out, in all due respect, your guess is as good as mine. They just did.
Although I think the idea is admirable, and I do believe that we have a great volunteer community, it's always good to know that, you know, maybe even just the gas is paid. So, I commend the effort, Commissioner Sutton. I just, at this point, don't feel supporting, and I think maybe we can go back to, how can we reward and encourage more people to apply for the positions? And again, I appreciate everybody's effort, and I do think awarding and thanking them is definitely in order. Other discussion?
I'd like to know, I mean, this is Commissioner Sutton's initiative. I'd like to know how he feels about it. Do you feel it's still warranted to continue on for just those two, or you think it sets up an unfair kind of situation?
Well, I think it's going to be unfair for different people to volunteer for whatever they volunteer for. I mean, if it's cost-effective for one board, it's cost-effective for the other people to volunteer for, and the whole goal is not to make money for anybody, because we all know that it doesn't, but it's just a little bit of encouragement to know that it doesn't cost them any money to come up here and volunteer for. I think it should be much higher than that myself, for individuals to take up their time and effort and everything. It's just like we voted to raise that part of, for the Planning Commission chairman, because they have to go to three or four different boards. And now, some of these boards meet once a year, so we're talking about $100 for a board that meets once a year. We're not talking about extravagant amount of money or anything else, but if we can't do it legally, we can't do it. But we can do it if it's included in their, in their cost, you know, fill up a gas for you. I don't know how they want to do it, but we need to be legal about it quite naturally. And I intend to approach people with the state legislature, see if we can get it changed.
But for purposes of what's before us tonight, I guess, to try to boil it down, because I agree that we need to do something, but I also agree with what Mayor Totti said, that we can only hit two of the six we were trying to get. So, do we want to proceed with the reimbursement type for all six, or do we just want to try to attack the two that we can, we can set a stipend for, or do we just, I mean, I'm curious as to where you want to go with it, since you're the initiative.
But my thing, if, there's none of us that live on a way that we're going to create a large cost effect. that we're gonna create a large cost effect with them coming here. I mean, within five miles, how much gas is it gonna take? You know, you gonna eat dinner before you come, you gonna do that anyway. That was not the point of it. The point of it was so that it doesn't cost you anything, because you may have to come to three, four, five meetings. I know the Industrial Board has picked up on its meetings, the Beer Board's picked up on its meetings. And as we grow, they're all gonna pick up and increase in it. And I think it's gonna increase, it'll be more difficult to recruit people to volunteer for some of these boards. I mean, it's obvious now, how many people have we had apply for them in the past? But I'm gonna do whatever the board wants to do. If you wanna go ahead and do the two now, and try to get the other ones added on there, somewhere or another, that's fine with me. Or just don't do it at all, and we'll just live with what we got.
Well, if I could offer an amendment to your motion then. I would amend the motion to all six, the Tree, the Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the Beer Board, the Park Board, and Industrial Board, to have a, no stipend, but to be able to submit receipts up to $25 per person for expenses incurred per meeting.
I'd second the amendment.
Discussion.
Everybody following what I was trying to say there? So if they drove 10 miles to come into the meeting, and they could, I think current mileage rate is 50 cents a mile, reimburse, then we give them, they could file, if they wanted to, they could file a request for $5. And we would pay that, to have them come into the meeting.
Commissioner, would that be for all the six?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And no stipend for any of the others. Not for any of them. Just, the expense only for those people, if they chose to claim it. If they didn't choose to claim it, it wouldn't be that way. If I was the chairman, and I went out and went to Kinko's and bought $10 worth of copies to be distributed at my meeting, then I could file a claim, you know, file a reimbursement claim for that $10. That's what I'm trying to get at, is a fairness to apply to all six, until we can maybe get this other thing ironed out.
I can draft an ordinance for that. If it's passed, I would like to point out one thing that I thought was rather ironic, and I'll make this real brief. I thought it was, when I started researching this, it was ironic that the Board of Commissioners, with the size of city we are, is limited to an amount. However, the Board of Commissioners is given the authority to pay the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Industrial Board, whatever they deem appropriate.
What are we gonna rule out? If they say they went and bought a $25 meal at a restaurant here, are we gonna let them turn that in?
I think you'll set up two $25 max, wasn't it?
Correct, but that would not be an expense that would be necessary to appear in this, in the meeting. Most meetings are held at 7 o'clock, which is way past the dinner hour. I would not, unless we sent them to Franklin to a meeting where they had to travel during the dinner hour, then to me, that would be a reimbursement that this CFO would not approve.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my amendment.
It's too much to ask for accounting to try to keep up with that for a $5 stipend, or pay back whatever it is.
And my next question was gonna be, was mileage gonna start from their work? Whether they be in Murfreesboro, or wherever they're coming from that day, or from where they hit the city limit, or...
Point of order, the motion's been withdrawn. Moving on to 7E, discuss and or take action on the City Hall Exterior Improvement Plan of Action. An update from Project Manager Hossinger.
I met with one contractor yesterday. I plan on trying to meet with the two more either late tomorrow or early next week, and have finalized quotes, so that we can award the contract, or the contractor, the work. But the one I met with has the same issues, what we've discovered previously with the gutters and the fascia board and everything else. So as soon as I have those quotes, I'll bring them back before the board to discuss, assuming that they're still within, under the $10,000.
Can you confirm that the tower should be illuminated?
We actually got up there this past week. The clock itself is illuminated with three bulbs. There is not actually a receptacle or a light fixture up there for the tower. I believe the city manager in the past has tried to illuminate it. But what I would like to do is try to get an electrician here to find out what it takes to get an actual, permanent light fixture up there to illuminate the tower.
So there is no power source?
Well, there's power up there, but there's not an actual fixture that was put in during construction to permanently light...
Not a light socket.
Yeah, there's not an actual light fixture up there to illuminate the tower.
So the electrician ran the wire up there, but there is no fixture? You have electricity in the tower?
Ran to the clock.
It's ran to the clock.
I see.
So it looks like somebody tried to use an extension cord to make a temporary fixture, but it just doesn't work properly. They were gonna light it up red and green for Christmas. And somebody built a wooden fixture with some floodlights to do it, and it's just, it's not the right way to do it. It needs to be a permanent fixture.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much, sir. Item 7F, discuss and or take action on the update of the library expansion plan. I'm honored to bring to you that we have been before the Williamson County Board of Commissioners. We had three committee meetings, and then the commission meeting took place, beginning of the 7th, yeah. And the board was requesting an addendum by the county mayor on the inter-local agreement. Currently, the inter-local agreement with the city of Fairview and the Williamson County is that the school facility tax that is collected is utilized for schools only. And our request as a board to participate in the enlargement or expansion project, or potential project, was to utilize some of that funds towards that project. So they have unanimously agreed, and that will now go forth as they will do the addendum. I'm asking that the information be brought back once the addendum is set forth. But until this point, there has not been a project submitted, there has only been rough drawing. So they will be going into their trustee meetings, looking with an architect, and then we'll be able to work with them and see exactly what their project would be. There is no monetary amount at this point assessed to the project, there's only an estimate. It could be from an 800 square foot to larger expansion on our current library. Are there any other statements from the board?
The only request I'd like to make is prior to us, and is probably part of the process, part of, before we approve the transfer of that money, that we have full disclosure to the project and the cost.
Absolutely.
About any other comment? Crystal, for the citizens, could you explain about that tax dollars? Because I know a lot of people get confused and think that we're spending, you know, their taxes on it, and it's actually a sales tax. So I thought maybe you might be able to explain how that works, and maybe that'll help. Like, when we donated money to the schools, it's out of the same fund. So if you'll just kinda give them a brief summary of, you know, what exactly it is and how we get it.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. I do not have one of my sheets in front of me to give you exact numbers, but there's a percentage of the sales tax that's collected for the county, that the county had earmarked for the schools in our county. And each city, based on their size, gets a portion of that sales tax. I don't know what the top number of the sales tax is, but at Fairview gets right at 5% of it. And so that's roughly between $7,000 and $10,000 a month. That has to go into the specific fund for our schools only. And now, we have been given permission to use it for the library. But it's a check that the county sends us every month, that we have to put in that bucket.
Do you know how many other cities participate in distributing out to the schools?
I do not, sir.
I believe it's only Brentwood and us. The rest of the cities don't distribute it out, I don't know, they hold on to it for some reason. Rather distribute it out to schools.
I think some people believe you hold on to it to build a new school versus help your existing schools.
The last time I looked, it took off 52 million to build a new school. They're gonna be holding on to it for a while.
Yes, sir, they will.
Could you do me a favor?
Yes, sir, I mean, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Could you get the inter-local agreement between the county and the city on the school facilities tax, and email it to the commission for our review?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments? Item 7G, discuss and or take action on Triangle School property. Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, ask Dr. Rice to come up to the podium. He had several questions since the last meeting, and I know he's spoken to myself and Commissioner Sutton, and I don't know whom else, but he was asking questions that came out of the last meeting that we didn't have answers to. And I asked Kevin if he could produce the document from when they met, the architect out there on the 300-plus thousand dollar change order, I guess, to get it completed. So if, Don, you could just answer his question, if you can, I guess Kevin can. But try to figure out where those come from, and just give him an idea of what we talked about the last time, and how we can get this project moving again.
Your questions, Dr. Rice.
I'm sorry?
It's your turn, your questions.
You don't have anything to say, Dr. Rice? I don't believe that.
I don't.
Do you, all right, let's just make it so, did you get a copy, an email or anything, from the architect saying it was the 360,000, 380,000? Because Kevin didn't get it.
No, sir, we haven't got anything, the formal proposal back from them yet. From my understanding, since I wasn't here at the meeting, that Kevin had said that they were going to get back in contact with me once they got that proposal together, and I haven't received it.
So you still don't have it either?
Have we looked at it, discussed the possibility of issuing the CO once the windows are put in, because the building is structurally sound? Safe and sound, let me put it like that.
The only way that a CO could be issued is if this board decides that the existing building as it is right now is all that they're gonna do, except the windows being placed in there. Because if they still wanna do the mechanical, electrical plumbing, build the kitchen and the restroom, we still have to have those plans to be able to, for John to review and approve, before they could do that construction. If it's just to occupy the building as it is, the windows need to be placed, a handicap parking space needs to be installed with a ramp from that parking space to the ramp that goes into the front of the building, and the threshold needs to be worked out of where it's ADA compliant, then we could issue a CO, because the building is structurally sound.
Parking off. Do love you to make some comments now, all right? I have no earthly idea in the world what a $380,000 proposal is for Triangle School. Folks, we have no intention of gold-plating the structure. It was my understanding that an architect was gonna be employed to do two things. One, draw the plans for the air conditioner, which have already been drawn by the one who was gonna install the air conditioner. And two, draw the plans for the wiring. Now, I know that doesn't cost $380,000. All right, let me make some more comments. My understanding, the comment was made a couple weeks ago, we need to do the building like it was when the building closed. When the building closed, it had, excuse me, it had electricity. Each room, the hallway, the stage, and the principal's office, all had lights. That's number one. When the historical association began working on that building as far as removing debris and so forth, guess what? There was also a kitchen and a bathroom. So that's just for your information. I don't know why this has been a seven-year project. Why is there not a way to move this project on? My understanding, the city's committed to this. Having it wired, what's such a novel idea? Having it air-conditioned, what's unusual about that? And besides that, the unit and the labor are being donated if the man can just be given authority to do what he knows how to do. He also knows how to install airflow ducts.
Dr. Rice, could I interrupt for just a second to ask a couple of questions, to possibly move it along?
Yes, sir.
Is it required that we hire the engineer, and we hire both studies for the wiring, or planning for the wiring and air conditioning also? Or is this something that we could have them submit, as long as they know the qualifications that we need, to us? So it would take some of the burden off of us, as much as you have to do, to be able to bring in those people in and submit their plans?
That's what I've been asking for, for seven years.
Excuse me?
No, no, you got a...
Was for plans to be submitted to us. It didn't matter, it didn't matter to me who paid for them, as long as we got adequate plans that we could review and approve.
So right now, if Dr. Rice went out and got a approved engineer, which is stamped or whatever you gotta have, to submit those, both of those plans to us, and if they were approved by you, then we could move forward with it?
Well, that'd actually be reviewed and approved by John, the building inspector.
Okay.
For us to be, for us to be able to do...
And if they weren't happy with it, it could be appealed, right?
For us to be able to do inspections on the building. So we have a file that has a paper trail where we've inspected the building to make sure that it is safe for occupation. We have to have plans that we review and approve, so when the construction is done, John goes, does an inspection, says, "Okay, you constructed the project according to the documents that is approved. We've approved it, you got approval for the electrical, which actually the state will do the electrical inspection. The only thing John will inspect if you're just doing electrical, and the MP and E is, John will do the inspection on any plumbing, and any mechanical."
So if it starts inside, it goes out and gets a qualified engineer to submit those plans to us, we would move forward?
Yes, sir, we just need, we need some plans in our hands that we can physically review and approve.
Who has to prepare the plans, and why can't Robert Clark install an air conditioner?
It don't matter who installs it, but it does matter who draws the plans. We have to have a licensed engineer to draw those plans and stamp them.
Why? He's done it for 50-some years.
Because it's a commercial building, and the city of Fairview requires that all commercial buildings, that those plans be stamped by a licensed engineer.
No offense, but who, besides you, has determined the Triangle School is a commercial structure?
Because you're asking the community and people to come into that building and view it just by the use of the building deems it as a commercial building.
I don't, Dr. Rice, I don't have a problem with his request to do that, and I hope to move the project forward. And if we need to get somebody else to submit those plans, we get them, submit them, and we move forward.
We need to know who needs to submit the plans. Believe me, I can get the building wired for less than $380,000.
Is it possible for you to let Dr. Rice know what the qualifications are for that person to make those plans? You don't have to do it right this second, but can you give him those?
We've told him and gave him that information several times.
Do you have those requirements, Dr. Rice?
Sir, you never, ever told me I had the authority to do that.
Don, can, could Will review Robert Clark's plans? And make necessary changes if there are any?
Will is not a mechanical engineer.
What about someone in Will's?
If they have a mechanical engineer on staff, then somebody in Griggs and Maloney's office, I can't say for sure. I would have to email Will and ask him.
If we could inquire on that, that may be our cheapest route. If we could inquire on that, that may be our cheapest route, since they already work for us.
If they can review what the plans that Mr. Clark has.
Is there any clause on a volunteer basis or, what's the other word? Not elbow grease, what's it called?
In kind is what you're thinking.
Is there a clause of some sort in the, that if it's in kind that... Does that bear any weight?
It don't. The code does not say that if somebody's going to do something for you for free, you don't have to present plans.
Okay, just asking.
No, I suppose it doesn't. But I do know that the well has become dry as far as volunteers as a result of spending the last two to three years seeing how Robert Clark has been treated and ignored and told no and told no. And he gets his group together and then there's a meeting and it can't happen and has to be delayed. Then Don gets involved again and you know how that is.
Well, the suggestion the Vice Mayor made, that we check and see if he has a mechanical engineer on staff there and that we submit these plans that we already have to him for approval or for change, and that will move the project forward. And that's the goal, if I'm not mistaken.
It is the goal. Let me mention about windows. I spoke with the person who has had the windows for two years or more now. Half of them are ready to be installed and unless Don tells me no, they're going to be installed in the next two weeks across the front of the building and part of the side. The others will be removed and will be much, much, much more quickly done. There is money, the cost of that is $15,000. The work will be done excellently. The windows will look like new and will be as good as new. It's incredible, his work. Know him well, Mark Tulligan. And there are funds, about $13,000, I believe, something like that, Crystal, left over from two or three or four years ago. You know, we're just slow getting things done. Plus, money that we have in the Historical Association's treasury will be, will pay that $15,000 deal. I told Mark, I assumed, and I know that's dangerous, but I assumed that this would be agreeable, that when half the windows were put in, that he would be paid. I told Mark yesterday, I said, when that's done, you will receive payment for $7,500. And then the other $7,500, when the work is, the rest of the work, is that agreeable?
Is that $15,000 you're speaking of, counting that $13,000? Or is that two separate monies?
Total.
Total of $15,000. About $13,000 is from the city, which goes back two, three, four years ago. It's just money carried over. Then the Historical Association will make up the difference if we need to.
Okay, the reason I ask that question is there was two other items that were stated, the handicap space to the ramp and the threshold to the ADA. Kevin, would you speak on that a minute of what maybe can be done on those two items? And how much you estimate it may cost?
I believe there's a parking question also to be added to that.
It's a handicap space to the ramp. Handicap parking space to the ramp.
Everybody here is familiar with the gift cottage. And we actually had that same requirement at the gift cottage out back. It's basically going to be the exact same design. City manager and I had actually discussed doing it in-house to mitigate the cost. We have a few people that are qualified to place and finish concrete. Just the biggest challenge is maintaining the cross slope and the running slope for the sidewalk to the actual ramp that's installed today. But that's something we've been looking at in-house to handle.
Could you look at that and give us a cost on that? So if that be the two things that would stand between the CO, other than the windows, we can at least have some resolution from where we sit?
The labor's there with the city staff. It'll be the cost of the concrete and the striping.
Thank you.
We've got the equipment to get everything prepped. We might have a little bit of form work, but you've seen we've done the welcome signs and everything else. There's no reason why city staff shouldn't be able to do a parking spot. I might have to buy a couple of specialized tools.
And the threshold that was spoke of, is that something you're aware of? Or do you need to share the information?
There's two doors going into the front of the Triangle School. Right now, as they stand, I think they're above the maximum for ADA. So we'll have to look at making one or both, and I'll coordinate with Don and John. If we can make one or both wheelchair accessible, because I think that's the issue right now.
You're talking about to Rice from Florida, the top of Seattle?
Yes.
Excellent, I think that's great progress.
Yes, let me say something. I talked about windows a second. And I don't know if this has been addressed or not. Eventually, we'll need to have a walkway from the post office to the school, and that includes making a little bridge. I am confident that I can get some donated labor, but I don't know if he has to be, I mean, he certainly knows how to do concrete work and has done it for.
Dr. Rice, let me assure you that we're going to do everything possible to make it succeed. It's something that I think everybody, I think everybody up here wants to see and move forward with a total design of what's been looked at before this. And you're talking about the sidewalk, all that. We want it to be nice. We want it to be something.
What's going to happen now that we've had this discussion?
Now, I expect for Don and from the Vice Mayor to contact our engineer and see if they have the mechanical engineer on duty and get the plans that you say you've already got to them, to see if they are usable or any changes that may be necessary. To me, that's the next step.
And in-house staff will be looking at the other two items that was stated by the codes department for the certificate of occupancy.
And, Don, can we put that back on for the next meeting?
And, Dr. Rice?
The windows, I'm sorry, the windows is a piece of the...
Yeah, if you're the man there next week and calling windows, Don might want to run up there and shut us down, as this happened to you.
Don, that won't be a problem, will it?
May I input, just real fast? The $13,000 is sitting in the unrestricted reserve account. So we'll have to have permission to pull that out. And I'll have to make a budget amendment before we can pay any money out. So that's at least the next meeting and then 15 days out from that, that the ordinance takes to reading.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Rice, the offhanded comments about Don, that little comment then about Crystal, that needs to stop. Dr. Rice, I have the floor, you do not. Please do not speak or I'll ask Chief Harris to have you removed from the building. My turn to speak, I have the floor. That stuff needs to stop if you want my vote. I have supported you all along, but I am growing weary of you coming up here and accusing the city. You need to take care of your part of it, we'll take care of our part of it. What you need to be concentrating on is getting those windows in. We are really clear, based upon what you've shared with us, what we need to do. We'll work on that. The Vice Mayor and the Codes Director will be working on that along with the Community Services Director over there. So, I have not recognized you, sir, you do not have the floor. You relinquish the floor when you stepped away. I have the floor. So I need for the comments to stop are from where I sit, it's become, you've become uncooperative with working with us and we just really don't need that hassle, especially the comments.
Call to order.
No, ma'am, I have the floor and this is open discussion. This is direct and taken.
No, sir, I'm calling the meeting back to attention to the motion at hand.
I'm sorry, you cannot do that. I have the floor and this is open discussion.
I'm calling the vote on the agenda item that we're discussing. Discuss and undertake action on the triangle, there be other...
Mayor, you are in violation of Robert's Rules of Order. You cannot do that. I have the floor.
I can end discussion and call for a vote.
No, ma'am, you can move the question if you would like and we will take a vote as to whether or not the question will be called. But you do not have the authority as the chairperson to stop. I have the floor. You recognize me? Would you like to move the question?
No, I'd like to take an immediate recess.
That requires a vote from the board.
Do I have a motion?
You don't have a motion because I have the floor.
May I?
Can't just raise a motion?
But we continue this evening's commission meeting. Your point has been made.
Thank you, but I still have the floor and when I'm finished, I will give it back to you. Now, do you want to call the question or not?
No, you call it.
I'm not calling the question. I'm going to finish my comments to Dr. Rice.
Can I not make a motion? If you must, continue this.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Rice, I consider us to have had a good relationship over the years over this and I am supportive of what you're trying to do out there. But it doesn't do anybody any good when you make snide comments about folks and you know what I'm talking about. Don't look at me like you don't. So just please, watch what you say. It's okay if you're frustrated. We all get frustrated. But that's not the Dr. Rice that I'm used to dealing with. That man is an intelligent man who is focused on his project. We got it that you're frustrated with some of the dealings with the city. But that's not going to help us move forward. So if you would just please watch that, then you can count on my support just like you can the other commissioners. Yes, sir, I'd be happy to entertain, if the mayor recognizes you. I have seated the floor, Mayor.
All right. Please, tell me.
We will continue, just a second. We will continue on comments. But I believe that the staff, the Codes Director, Historical Society have all had explanation. Would there be any action on the agenda item?
Mayor, if we could just allow Dr. Rice to welcome his fellow board members that were here tonight. They haven't been here in a long time and there's four of them sitting here. If we could just recognize them, I think we could move on after that.
The floor is, yes? You may.
I'm Lisa Anderson. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Historic Commission. I just have one question. At last meeting at the Triangle School, we had met with an architect, Alan Lowe. And I just need to know what happened with that?
He decided he didn't want part of the project.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know because I knew we had an architect going with it and I didn't have a clue that he had decided to step away from the project. So thank you.
Just to make sure, we're on the same guidelines, we're going to submit this, we're going to submit the plans if they have the mechanical department at our engineer's firm for them to go over and see if they're approval or what changes need to be made.
And I need to have those plans. They didn't leave those plans with us when they brought them to us.
Dr. Rice, can you get those to him tomorrow?
He already has them, sir.
Do you have another copy of them? Apparently, you don't have them, Don?
They weren't left with me because we told them that we couldn't use them.
But what happened to them, do we know?
Kevin knows.
Kevin, you know what happened to them?
We need to be real specific when we're talking about plans and sketches. But what I received from Robert Clark back in probably late November was actually a sketch on graph paper, showed some mechanical calculations and that was all it was. He has no equipment, no nothing yet. He's just waiting on the word go. What we will need is, like Don said, a formal set of engineered plans for that air conditioning unit. So, right now, I've got the calculations that I've scanned them myself. I can send those to Will, assuming they have a mechanical engineer on staff.
That's all we're...
Is that what y'all want to hear?
And then he can give it the proper stamp of approval if it's approved.
But I believe Griggs and Maloney, for the most part, is nothing but an environmental, civil, and structural engineering firm. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you all for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Who are the other board members that are there? Dana? We appreciate the work y'all do. It's tireless, it's free, it's everything you do. And hopefully, we can bring this to a conclusion and move forward with the project.
Moving on to 8A, discuss and or take action on Bill 2013-21.
It's an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Chester Road, owned by Kelly J. Schiaver and wife Kelly C. Schiaver. As shown on Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Role Map 47, parcel 26.01, from RS 15 PUD to RS 40. Move for approval, second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Mr. Schiaver, what is your purpose for this zoning change?
I'd like to divide it into two separate tracks since development, you know, it's gotten so slow over the last few years. And I had hoped to sell that to a developer, you know, in the last few years, but since there's not a lot of that going on, I just, I've had no luck with that. So I just thought I'd make it into two separate tracks, you know, a five-acre track and a nine-acre track. And might be more desirable for folks, you know, looking for a bigger track, you know, something that's style.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item 8B, discuss and or take action on Resolution 13-13.
It's a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on changing of zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Chester Road, owned by Kelly J. Schiaver and wife Kelly C. Schiaver. As shown on Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Role Map 47, parcel 26.01, from RS 15 PUD to RS 40. Move for approval, second.
First and second, discussion?
Don, on most of these, we usually have an address incorporated with it. Do you? Okay.
Is there a date proposed?
October 17th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, sir.
He's got the rest of these ordinance to do then.
Item 8C, discuss and or take action on Resolution Number 17-13?
Are they duly represented?
Were they properly notified?
For the resolution, for the public hearing?
For the resolution to set a public hearing.
They don't have to be here, do they, Larry? For the resolution? A resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the annexation of certain property located at 2950 Fairview Boulevard and to incorporate, same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, belonging to Jerry E. Carey and wife Helen A. Carey. All of the property proposed for annexation lies within the city of Fairview, Tennessee's growth boundary. The property to be annexed is located in Williamson County, Tennessee, on Tennessee Geological Listen of Assessment Role Map 69, parcel 9. Move for approval, second.
We have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Item 8D, discuss and or take action on Resolution 18-13?
It's a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the annexation of certain property located at 2931 Fairview Boulevard and to incorporate, same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, belonging to Russell Spicer and wife Peggy Spicer. All the property proposed for annexation lies within the city of Fairview, Tennessee's growth boundary. The property to be annexed is located within Williamson County, Tennessee, on Tennessee Geological Listen of Assessment Role Map 69, parcel 79. Move for approval, second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 8E, discuss and or take action on Resolution 14-13?
It's a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on an ordinance to add Chapter 3, Section 13-301, Keeping of Chickens, to Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Ordinance of the Municipal Code of the City of Fairview, Tennessee. Move for approval, second.
First and second, discussion?
Mayor, is it appropriate, at this point, I emailed all of y'all to offer, saying I was going to offer an amendment? Is it, can we address that now or does the limit, the scope of the thing prevent that?
This is not discussing the ordinance as whole. This is discussing a public hearing scheduling and agreeance.
All right.
That's correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 8F, discuss and or take action on splash pad in the park. Commissioner Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, since I got to talk. Basically, there was a citizen that came to me and wanted to know the likelihood of getting a splash pad due to, a lot of people out here go to Kingston Springs. So it was something that I told her, I said, well, you know, anything like this, support is the best way to know. See how many people that are interested and then we can... See how many people that are interested, and then we can at least, you know, bring it up for discussion." So she actually started a petition and has several hundred of signatures on it. Now, unfortunately, last minute, something happened, and she's not here, so I can't give you exact amount. But I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, see if anybody is interested, and maybe possibly sending that to the park board to look into as far as, you know, is this something a desirable thing, how much it would cost, and then come back and see. Y'all are looking at me funny.
I've seen them before. I think they're very attractive in communities, and I know in the summertime, the kids love them. Bicentennial Park is a...
But you want to send it to the park board to approve and then send back to us?
Well, I mean, I just thought that was a good place to start. I mean, we obviously, we need somebody to do the research and to see the feasible process. So I really felt like, you know, maybe going to the park board, and then they can come up and do, they could do the homework of, you know, what it is. But, I mean, it could be done really nicely. I mean, you could use, there's, but it's the research leg of it that I was thinking maybe the park board could do for us, and then bring it back. There's ways you can use it, you know, from the existing pond, the water source, and some of those details, we would have to, this is more like a citizen's ideal, bringing it up here for discussion, and so maybe we could go to research it. I mean, it could be animal-themed. I think it could fit into the landscape, it could be close to the existing. So I just felt like, and it's up to y'all, I wanted to throw it out there, and like, since she went to the effort, I hate that she wasn't able to make it, but I know she was prepared to come tonight. So, as far as those act numbers, but you would be surprised. There's a lot of people that said that's something they would like to see in our community.
The only question I would have, the first step would be to check with the land trust to see if it'd be allowable in the park.
That's, that's...
Because we've had problems with putting a fountain in the middle of the lake, so I can't imagine putting a concrete pad in the middle of the park.
Mm-hmm.
As far as being approved by them, I'm all for the idea, a skate park also, but, you know, to discuss it inside that park.
I agree.
The city manager has a bunch of paperwork on this, and we've actually been out and visited the one in Kingston Springs.
Oh, good, okay.
So, I think we could bypass, I think we could bypass going to the park board with that and let him give us his information and cost analysis and stuff.
Well, and maybe that's, if they've done some of the...
Beat it up and have it open by spring.
Well, I mean, I think that we definitely would want to go to the land trust and definitely want to see the figures. I mean, it's just, I didn't know that he was already in the process of doing homework on it.
Would y'all be interested, can I, would y'all be interested in maybe it being, we've talked several times about expanding the park system? And while I don't think having it in Bowie Park, if it meets with the conservation thing, is a bad thing, that this might be the way to begin an expansion of our park system. If we, and I'm just going to use this as an example, if we, if, instead of building it in Bowie Park, if we built it on another piece of land with another playground, or another picnic tables or something to that, so that it gets us multiple places for people to go. Then we don't have to deal with necessarily the controversy about, you know, what does it feel in Bowie Park? But it also starts to give us more parkland somewhere else. If, I mean, for example, I think it's what, 11 acres we've got on Deer Ridge Road that's fairly flat, that's already got, you know, water, all that stuff out there. We don't, you know...
You could put it in the center of History Village or a triangle.
Well, Dr. Rice, not hearing, he's probably already mad at me, but the bottom line is, though, it would be an attraction to get people to that end of the city where History Village is going to be. So, you know, there, and it would also give another place for people to go. They wouldn't have to cross Highway 100. They, as we built the sidewalks out, everything would be on that side of the road, so that people coming from the neighborhoods, some of the neighborhoods could do that. I just think that, I think it's a great idea, and I support you on it, but I'd like to see us maybe look at, is Bowie Park the best place for it? Maybe we want to start our park system with that, like we're doing out with a different fishing lake out at Evergreen. Just a thought. What do y'all think?
Well, I'm not opposed to other options on where to go. I mean, I think that's one thing, you know, that we've had the park board doing is potential, you know, park system, other parks. I don't know what the best location is. I do know that it is something with already the existing playground, that it's cost-effective, it would probably be cheaper to build it in an existing space if the land trust, you know, is, if this would fit into that. But one of the things that, you know, when we go to some of these other places, we have to worry about parking and some of the other bathrooms, some of the things that might come. Now, eventually, we may be to that point in these parks that we would have to consider, okay, bathrooms are, you know, or what are we going to use these for? So I don't know if that's something that might want to be done earlier, but I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know that it has to be.
The current survey, that's out on the website, we have a website, fairview-tn.org, there's a survey, and that is one of the questions. So I'll make a motion that it's deferred to the park board for the evaluation and the consideration. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? My discussion in that is the city manager is present, he can bring that information, and that way it can be a think-tank opportunity. If there is the lady that had investigating, lots of information, we'd like to have her be able to share her information as well. And then it can also be looked at at the probable different sites that would be more feasible with water, restrooms, and items that'll be needed, just to consider as far as expenses. It would be cheaper to have more things there than not, and all those things can be delivered back as a recommendation from the park board, and the city manager will share what he has seen and my thoughts. Other discussion?
I just think we should keep it inside the board commissioner with the impression we have we can obtain from them. To me, that's part of the problem that we have with projects taking two, three, four years to get back in here. It's just another step that I don't think we need to take, but that's everybody's own opinion of it.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
There'd be no action? I mean, action failed, so?
There was an original motion on that.
I made a motion to defer to the park board for consideration.
I know, but before that, yeah.
That was it?
That was it.
You can make another one now.
Well, I make a motion to have the city manager present what he has as far as research and looking into cost and potential project.
Second.
Could I amend that? Could I amend that to give him 60 days to do that? And in doing that, he is to provide us with cost figures and necessary approvals and give us a choice of locations?
I think 30 days would be more applicable to that. They've already done some paperwork and looked into it. Do you agree with the vice president being part of it?
I mean, I feel, I feel comfortable that he could bring it back.
And I think that would also give us time to consider the land trust question also.
I can live with 30 days.
30 days is...
That's fine.
Do you mind?
That's, that's good.
Can you make that amendment?
I changed it from 30 to 60 to 30, excuse me.
Can the amendment be restated, please?
I amend Commissioner Carroll's to limit the response time to 30 days, that the response include a multiple locations and expenses for each location, based on current city property, excuse me. I don't want to purchase any new property.
Second.
Second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The original motion? Any other, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 8G, discuss and/or take action on Bill 2013-07.
It's an ordinance to amend the city of Fairview...
I'm sorry?
This ordinance has already passed first reading, so this really needs to be, item needs to be taken off the agenda and move on to H.
Okay.
And the same thing with I. Both those were...
G and I, remove both of those.
Yes, please.
Get noted for the records, that 8G be deleted, 8I be deleted. 8H is discuss and/or take action on Resolution Number 15-13.
It's a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on an ordinance to amend the city of Fairview, Tennessee municipal zoning ordinance, Table 5-102A, continued use and structures allowable within residential districts. Move for approval. Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discuss and/or take action on Resolution 16-13.
It's a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on an ordinance to amend the city of Fairview, Tennessee municipal zoning ordinance 3-105.1, Minor Home Occupation, Section J, by adding subsection X. Move for approval. Second.
First and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item K, discuss and/or take action on Bill 2013-20.
Impound lot. An ordinance to establish an impound lot, regulations and fees for impounded and/or seized vehicles. Move for approval. Second.
First and second, my discussion would be, do you have a location identified?
Yes, at Public Works.
And the next question would be for Larry. In a site of an ordinance that you've drawn up, is it before us prior to instruct to draw up the ordinance, or is it to be presented as an ordinance without any prior discussion?
I was just, I think the board, Commissioner Sutton had requested that we draw the ordinance from a previous, from a previous board meeting.
So it's not new business, it's old?
Yeah, it's...
Would it be considered new business as a question?
It would be new business because it hadn't been considered before. He just asked me to draw the ordinance and bring it back, and that's why it's here tonight for first reading.
So you're stating in a previous meeting, we discussed an impound lot?
They discussed it, and he asked me to draw an ordinance.
There's certain requirements that state has to be secured, it has to be fenced in, all these type things, and asking to look at the ordinance for us to do that. I'm sorry.
Is there any other board member that recalls discussing an impound lot at any time?
No, I will, I think in a workshop one time or somewhere.
No, in a direction from the bench that was told to draw up the document.
Come up here.
Can y'all look back and see what meeting and when?
Yeah, I couldn't swear it was in a board meeting, but I know I was instructed to draw the ordinance, because I wouldn't draw the ordinance without it. It could have been at a workshop or whatever, but I was instructed to draw the ordinance, and I did and submitted it.
Well, it hasn't been anytime soon, has it? Because if none of us remember it...
It's been within the last month.
I feel like it was in a, like, he did his report, and he said, "Will you do it?"
Okay.
I feel like I remember something.
But it was during a meeting.
Okay, well, just give us a look at the tapes or the minutes from the meeting and let us know.
My general question is, is it standard that business is not discussed in an agenda item, and an ordinance become new business without any prior discussion?
Right, well, yeah, I wouldn't have drawn it without a direction to draw it. I just simply remember Commissioner Sutton asking me to draw the ordinance. Do you remember that?
Yes.
So anyone can ask you to draw up an ordinance of anything?
Sure. Anybody can ask me to draw an ordinance?
At any time, without the board directing?
Because it's going to have to come before the board, and if any commissioner asks me to draw an ordinance, I would, I would draw the ordinance and submit it to the city Because it can't, the ordinance doesn't have any authority until it's passed by the board.
I understand.
So if you ask me to draw an ordinance, I'm going to draw the ordinance and submit it to the city manager for distribution to the board members.
I think the question...
And then what, then what the board does with it is, you know, is, all due respect, not any of my business.
I understand.
I think the question is, an individual on this board could ask you to draw an ordinance without the approval of the entire board?
Yes, I would draw it because it would have to come back to the board.
It's got to come back anyway.
It's got to come back to the board for their approval. I mean, if a member of the staff asked me to draw an ordinance relating to what they're doing, I would draw it and submit it to the city manager.
My question is, would it be first reading, or how do you want to do it?
Well, let's get down to the nitty-gritty. Why is it here? We know who asked for it.
We cannot, we have, we do tow vehicles, drug vehicles, and they do not go to the wrecker services lot. So we have them, and we end up, they leave them, and I cannot charge, I cannot do anything because we have no ordinance that says I can charge them. And once the courts release it back to them, we give them a certain amount of time to come get it. Well, I can charge, I think it's $35 a day, that they don't come and get their vehicle.
But if we set this up, you can charge $35 a day for as long as you have it?
Yes.
During the whole, if a court proceeding was two or three years?
Yes, and then we end up, that the money that they owe, they end up saying, "Well, no, I'm not going to pay that," and we end up getting the car and auctioning it all. But what happens, we have so many cars there, and it's a small lot, and it's hard to get what cars we confiscate or take in, that we can't do nothing with. We have four or five cars out there, six or seven, and they're just stuck.
The main question that I brought up for it was so that we could be reimbursed for storing the vehicles, and the way that it's written up right now, we cannot charge for that whatsoever.
We cannot charge at all.
Without the ordinance, if they come to get their vehicles, they take it for free.
But I can't, you know, we've had vehicles that they've left here for six, eight months. We've had some that, and I can't charge them to after the court. So if we've got them for three or four months, and then they go to court, and then they get their vehicle back, I can only charge them from that day on, not from the time I got the vehicle.
Chief Harris, so we're already charging, I mean, we're already holding their cars on Public Works property?
We have a fenced-in area for their cars, yes.
Okay. And this is, and the ordinance, are you wanting to do, is it certain arrests? Like, I know there's a difference of, you know...
Drugs.
Drugs and...
Burglaries, if you use your vehicle in the progress of a burglary, we can take it?
So those would be the only...
No, there's a lot of reason we can take your vehicle.
And what's the, like, have y'all done the research as far as, like, I don't know how much it's going to cost to man the site, how much more is in?
We're not going to man, they don't have to man the site.
Okay, I'm asking.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be secured, it has to be fenced in.
Okay.
Which it is.
Which it already is.
Right.
But we've got vehicles there that we end up, after they get released, we keep for a year. They won't come and get them. I can't charge them for it.
It says that the fee for impounding a vehicle shall be equal to the fee charged by the wrecker service who tows the vehicle.
Yes, and that's $35 lot fee. It's what they charge a day.
So the existing wrecker companies, like where, what do they do now? Educate me on this.
Okay. If you have a wreck and, or you don't have insurance, blah, 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 they tow your vehicle, we just get it off, you know, you've left it out on the road, they keep the vehicle. They charge them from day one. But if we take the vehicle in, and it's been involved in drugs...
Robbery.
Robberies, there is a statute for so many offenses of DUI, we can take the vehicles. Well, we keep them because we usually use it, it's evidence, we go to court, we try to get the vehicle, and if we do, we do, if we don't, we don't. But I can't get them to pay or come and get the vehicle for months. And we've done this for years, and it's just hard to, it gets full, because it's not a big area, because we don't take very many vehicles.
Lots of cities do this across the state?
Oh, yes.
County does too.
Majority of cities across the state do that, because what happens is, if somebody, if the court releases the vehicle, and I don't come and pick it up, I know it didn't cost me anything, I come up there when it's convenient.[1798.01] cost me anything, I come up there when it's convenient. If it's, if it's been released for 20 days, and they come to pick it up, the city can't charge anything, it just sits there for 20 days for free. And if they know there's gonna be some charge, if I'm gonna go get the vehicle, now, obviously, if I'm gonna abandon the vehicle, I don't care what you're charging me. But if I'm gonna go get the vehicle, I'm inclined to do so a lot quicker if I'm gonna have to pay the impound fee, because pretty soon, the impound fee can eat up the value of the vehicle.
And wouldn't they give us grounds for mechanic's lane as far as title recovery?
Storage lane.
Storage lane. It would, right.
Is there a clause in here that speaks of if the car's abandoned?
If it's abandoned, and we get it, we don't keep it. If it's abandoned, it goes to the wrecker service.
I'm saying it sits in your lot for a year.
Whether, that's what-
What do you do?
After, after so long, what's it called?
Is it part of this ordinance? So it's laid out of what happens when someone shows up 30 days later and their car's gone, or 50 days?
You don't know how long it's gonna be, but if, if they abandon the car after their statutory limit of time, it's right in the state statute, that you can advertise a vehicle and can sell it, because it's abandoned.
So what we're really authorizing here is our participation in the state statute.
At $35 a day.
In essence, yes.
Okay. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous updates from staff? Staff comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I have my financials for the month of August. We should have a PowerPoint that we hope to be, do we have a hard copy? Uh, no, ma'am, I did it literally right before the meeting, but I can send it to you when I walk out of here.
Thank you.
On the first- Uh, I have that our revenues are at 11% currently. Our target should be 16.67% as normal, property taxes at zero, because the bills have not been sent out yet. The sales tax, I have a projection for removing the amount that we had projected for revenue for the new business. We would be at 13.65%, which would make us still 3% below target, running about $44,000 behind budget. I will continue to monitor that each month. It's hard to say, that's not a, a set amount that comes in every month, it fluctuates, and around Christmas is usually a lot higher. So I think that number really needs to be looked at around the end of December. Well, actually, it won't come in until January, but I think we should have a six-month review, as I think we've done before.
I believe we had quarterly review with the previous CFO.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Quarter is fine, I just, I know that, I think last year we did six months, but that's okay. I'll do whatever you want to do, but I don't think we'll see a true amount on that, that line item until around January, maybe, the end of January, but because of the Christmas months, it's usually higher. But I am tracking that, removing that amount out that we had budgeted for the new business. For expenses, we are at 17.64%, and as usual, the beginning of the year is, is rough on us, because we pay the 17,000 in data processing, and we've paid 70,000 in our property and liability insurance to date. Those both have to be paid upfront in the beginning of the year, and so it maxes out the budget by the end of August, usually. The Parks Department is over budget also due to the Fourth of July expense. It, the budget obviously maxed out on the Fourth of July, so that budget maxed out in the beginning of the year. But overall, our budget, our expenses are only up 5.5% of last year, when our actual budget is up 7.2% from last year. And that would be the financials, if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Oh, oh, sorry. I would like to say, you asked about the bid process, I calculated it, if they can get it in the paper tomorrow, would be October 16th, the day before our board meeting.
Can we set that for that day?
As long as Nancy can still get it in the paper tomorrow, yes, sir.
If it's done, if not, by the next day.
It can be done, no matter what.
City attorney comments?
I have nothing.
Other staff comments? Excuse me.
Thank you. Before y'all, this evening, I left you a legal notice invitation to bid for the Greenway project. Been working with Will for the last week or so to get the Greenway project. We got approval to go ahead and get the bid process done. Should have the bids back by the 15th. Looking at having the whole project done by the end of March of next year. Like to try to get at least the asphalt work done before they shut down in December. So hopefully, we can get the process going, and that's just one of the projects we can get underway with. But waiting on the, the full document from T-Doc, but they, they didn't say we couldn't do the bid process.
Do you like to give an update on the third and last? Welcome to Fairview sign.
Yes, as y'all have seen, the sign is actually going quite nicely. It's about a seven-day lead time. I solicited quotes from both local sign companies. They were within about $80 of each other. Hopefully, by next Friday, we'll see that sign out there done, and we did dress up some of the potholes and uneven spots in the Triangle School property as well, so hopefully that-
I would move along with lighting on those.
As far as lighting goes, I'm still working with Middle Tennessee. City manager and I notified, or we've had some discussions with Jeremy Fox about actually some of the existing power poles on Triangle School, and some new lighting schematics from Deer Ridge Road down to Slippery Hollow, even down towards King Road, kind of like we did coming this way. So that's part of the discussions we've been having.
Other two signs also?
That's correct.
I'm glad you brought, brought up King Road.
When, when do you think we're gonna be able to conclude that?
The, the paving?
No, I know the paving, we're talking, I'm talking about the signage, lighting, the signage. That's what I was, that was my question.
Right now, they'll have to do a photometric study on the lighting itself, but this is Fairview Boulevard from Deer Ridge to King Road, not King Road itself.
That's correct. My, my question's only gonna be about paving on King Road when y'all are done with lighting it up.
I'm too with that.
All right, when are we gonna start the project, and when are we gonna finish it?
My intent is to have the bid document ready to go early next week, to be in the paper next week, and 22 days from then, we can, we'll have our per tonnage. Trying to wrap all these loose ends up for my departure, so that's one of my, I've given a prioritized list to the city manager on the specific projects, and that's probably the number one or two.
Thank you, sir.
I just had a question. I had several citizens at Nature Fest Saturday comment about, they were concerned that we haven't paved all the way up to the sidewalk on the park entrance, and I was wondering if that was something that was gonna be done. They were saying that it was gonna make the sidewalk, because the water would get up under it.
Are you talking from the actual gate till, to where the sidewalk turns and goes into the nature center?
It's as you're coming in, yes, the entrance.
That's part of the punch list, that Will and I have been working with the contractor, that's part of the retention. They actually owe us to dress up that area and get back to what existing was, which is the shot rock, and, and make sure that that area drains, but they are, they, they are required to get that area dressed up. As far as, are they worried about the elevation? I mean, are they worried about-
No, they, the water was gonna get under the sidewalk and crack the-
You're talking about, yes, that, that will be addressed, and part of it, the shot rock, the larger rock that we're talking about, that actually reduces the, the water velocity and prevents that erosion. So yes, that will be addressed, that has been discussed with me and Griggs and Maloney and the contractor.
But from the asphalt, the gravel space to the sidewalk, will that be asphalted?
No, that currently, as that's shown, there's no curb and gutter, no nothing that was originally designed to maintain, be just like the opposite side. When we're done, it should look just like the north side of the road. It has the gravel bed and the shot rock.
You're kidding.
No. Now, phase two, which the original project, there's phase one and phase two, that could be addressed. Phase one was the paving straight up to the park level and the sidewalk into the park.
It would make sense right now to, to lay piping and then pave over it before they even put shot rock in it.
I don't disagree with you, but that's not-
I can't imagine putting that nice sidewalk in. I, I don't know who reviewed those plans. I guess we did, but we all missed it.
Yeah, because those plans, that job was bid up prior to me coming on board here. But I do agree that there is, there is a potential issue there. I can, I can talk with the city manager and find out what it'd take to maybe get some smooth line pipe and put it in ourselves.
We need to look at that quickly.
But what, what the, the groups and Maloney and I have discussed is, phase two is to actually pave that area and do a, either a concrete gutter or an asphalt gutter of some sort, where the water will run down the gutter and not erode the actual sidewalk.
So if we did, like Commissioner Johnson, Vice Mayor Johnson said, wouldn't that take care of that? We wouldn't have to have a gutter or anything, we could just use the sidewalk edge as the gutter?
We could do that. The only issue I might have to see is where we actually, how we catch the water. Do we, do we pick up too much velocity going down the road for the end catch basin to catch, or is the water gonna skip past that? Do we need to put intermediate catch basins, which would require additional concrete and some drainage, some drains? I, I'd really have to talk to the engineer, that, somebody that's qualified to make that design.
I would think the engineer that's on staff and the contractor that's being paid would be able to advise you.
Yeah, I agree.
And then just my other question about any kind of, remind me, when I was asking about the sidewalk in the park, the big step off, and y'all were gonna potentially gravel?
That's been done, that's been done for three, four weeks now.
Oh, it still looked big, okay.
It's, it's within six inches. It's actually a six-inch curve out there. During phase two, we're actually gonna have to probably take some of that crush and run out there. We actually used pug to get it compacted, got the old compactor rolling, and we spent a better part of a day out there, and we have a six-inch curve that's standard in front of the nature center. Took about four loads of pug to get that done, but it is, we addressed that area for you.
Okay.
We've had a discussion about the foot bridge over the creek out there, and you're gonna check with the land use people to see if there's any problems?
Kind of like the splash flood discussion, we need to check with the land use on what we can and can't do to put a bridge out there. What I'm gonna try to do is, y'all have all seen the telephone pole bridge that we built out at Evergreen? If that's something we can do and not impact what is the requirement in the park, that's something we'll, we'll approach. And then hopefully, we can get maybe some of the Eagle Scouts involved, and we'll get the poles across and they can, they can build the bridge for us.
You think we have an answer by next meeting?
We should be able to, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Other staff comments? City attorney comments?
The only thing that, that I have, just as an information thing, I received from the county attorney today, and, and, well, it wasn't really an amendment, but it was, it was a, an introduction to the agreement that we have relating to the fire departments that I, as soon as I got it, I spoke with Chief Cooper, and he said, "Yeah, when they had the, the meeting last fall, that this was discussed, and all it is, is finalizing the gentleman's agreement that's been in effect for a good long while." So I, that should, I should have that resolution before the board at the next meeting. I got it today, and I will prepare the resolution and have it for the next meeting regarding the fire zones and mutual assistance and this type of thing. It's just an extension of the existing mutual assistance agreement, but it spells out what apparently they've been doing for a long time, and I'll just pass it along for your information. It'll be here, should be here at the next meeting. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
I have a question for the city attorney.
Um, I actually got two questions. When we were talking about the, anybody can have an ordinance drawn up, you, we pay you, right, to draw up the ordinance?
Yes, ma'am, and before I draw an ordinance, if, if a commissioner or a staff member asks me, I, I always check with the city manager before I do that, to get his verification.
Okay.
Because if he said, "No, we can't do that," then I would go back to the individual, because technically, and I'm not meaning to step on anybody's, but technically, I work for him.
Right.
He's, he's the person that, that directs what I do. And if I, if I had an ordinance request, matter of fact, the city manager, I remember, was here when that was discussed, and did instruct me to draw the ordinance. But if I had a request from a staff member to draw an ordinance, just like the resolution that I had today from the county, I have spent no time on the resolution, other than, obviously, I opened the email and read it to see what it was, but I've spent no billable time on that and will not until it's, it's approved by the city manager.
Okay.
I don't think he'll disapprove it, because it's something that, that is normally what they do anyway, and the county has requested it, but if, if you ask me to do something, I would run that by the city manager, and if he says, "No, we can't do that," then I'd come back to you and say, "I, I can't do that, because the city manager has instructed me not to do that."
Okay. I, I just wanted to double check that, because I was thinking, if any of us can just write up, then we're costing taxpayers money if we didn't have board approval, but if it's the city manager that's approving, you know, this, then I guess that changes the situation.
Larry, just for some clarification, it's the same thing as asking for an opinion, am I right?
If, if you, anything like that, I'll run, I will always-
Oh, opinion, okay.
I will always check with the city manager before. Like I said, with, when I get an email, obviously, I'm gonna open it, see what's there, but if I spend two minutes or 10 minutes reading an email, I'm not gonna bill the city, because I've got to see what that email is before I know what to do with it.
Right.
But if it's anything that's gonna involve any time, if you call up and ask a question, if I don't have to go do any research, I answer a question if you're on the phone, I'm not gonna bill the city for that. If it's something that's gonna take some time, I'm going to, to say, I'll have to get this to you, that I'll get an answer back to you, but I gotta run this by the city manager. And I'll, I'll always check with him, or if he directs me to do, if he directs me to do something, then I'm gonna, you know, do what I'm, what I have to do to satisfy his request, but if, if anyone else does this, that's the reason I have things distributed through one central point. If, if, if you request me to do something, I will come back to the city manager and say, "Commissioner Carroll has requested me to do such and such." And usually, if the commission has requested something, the city manager's gonna look at it, and I normally don't have disapproval on it, but if I did, I would come back to you and say, "I have not gotten approval from this from the city manager, and I can't do this." And then the board could direct, of course, the city manager works for the board, then the board can direct the city manager to do it, and then I would be directed to do that. But no, I don't run up time each bill-
No, I'm not insulting you. I mean, I was just-
No, I'm, I'm not insulting, I'm a big boy, that doesn't bother me, but each bill that I submit to the cities, says on there that these are approved by the city manager, and if a commissioner, a particular commissioner asks me to do something, I will put an asterisk by that, that bill, even though the city manager approves it, and say, "This was requested by Commissioner Carroll or Commissioner Sutton or whoever," so that the city manager looks at it and says, "Oh, yeah, you know, I didn't direct that," but even though he told me to do it, I have on there, on that bill, who, who actually requested that, if it's other than the city manager.
Okay, just, you know, while we're here and talking, so if the board of commissioners approves something, and then you still have to wait for the city, it doesn't matter what we say, the city manager has to direct you to-
Well, usually, the city manager's here when, because when the board of commissioners approves something, everybody's here. And normally, if, if he's sitting here, and the board of commissioners ask that such and such be done, and it requires me to do something, normally, what I would do then is, is I would prepare it and send it to the city manager. And then he could always come back and say, "Well, I'm not gonna pay for that," but as a usual thing, if the board of commissioners sits here and, and directs that something be done, and it requires that I do something, and it requires Ms. Crystal to do something, I probably won't go back and get separate approval for that from the city manager, because the whole board is directed that that be done. But it would be submitted back to him for distribution to you, so that, that under the old theory, you can't work but for one person. Plus, it keeps the city manager in the loop. If you've directed him to do something, and there's four pieces of it, and he's got my piece, and then he gets Ms. Crystal's piece, he's in, he's in the loop and should be. But if, if a staff member or, or, or an individual commissioner asks me to do something before I spend any billable time on it, I would, I would get in contact with the city manager, either by phone, email or something, and say, "I have been requested by Commissioner Carroll to do such and such. Do I have your approval?" Or words to that effect. What are your thoughts? And generally, if it's, you know, because you guys don't normally have wild requests, there's usually some, you know, some basis to it if you ask me to do something, but I would not do that because it comes out of the city's budget until, without the knowledge of the city manager. of the city manager.
Okay.
And, and if he didn't approve it, I would let you know why I didn't do it.
Okay, that explains a lot. Um, what about tonight's little, um, Robert's Rules of Order, I didn't, you never piped in, um, what was going on, and it all happened really quick, but, um, could you give your, um, you have any words of wisdom, and, um...
I, I didn't pipe in, 'cause I wasn't, I wasn't asked to, there's some things that, that, you know, if it's something that's illegal, uh, just like, uh, for example, the, uh, paying of the, of the board members, uh, I will pipe in on that, because I'm, I'm saying, you know, you're about to do something that you can't do, and, at the end of the day, if you have something done that, uh, intentionally, not by mistake, but something's intentionally, an action that you can't do, then that's a violation of, of, of your, your office, and can lead to some pretty serious stuff. Uh, Robert's Rules of Order, uh, technically, and I'm not, uh, you know, refereeing things, but, when, when you have the floor, until you surrender the floor, unless it's just totally out of order, you can ask for order, ask people to calm down, that's certainly within the chairman's, uh, authority.
Correct.
And, and you can say, you know, calm down, but theoretically, either I get to finish, or the next motion would have been, if I'm talking, and, and it's, there's a, a motion on the floor, any member of the board can say, call the previous question, you take a vote on it, if the vote passes, then I have to shut up, because I'm, I'm, they've taken the floor back from me, and it says, we'll call the question, that cuts off discussion, you move immediately to that question. But you can always, if, if things, you know, if things get, uh, no disrespect, but if I think things get into rowdy, I'll say, you know, point of order, calm down, we need to, we'll have, we need to have order.
Okay. Was that not what happened, though? I mean, can't she not call a recess during the, um...
No, you can call a point of order and say, calm down, or, you, you call the previous question, and you have a vote that sustained the previous question, and then if you wanna call a recess, you know, you have the floor, you can recess for five minutes, two minutes, whatever you need to do.
And doesn't it return back to the person who had the floor prior to the recess?
Not, uh, not if you call, not if you call the question, that cuts off debate. But I didn't, I didn't pipe into that, 'cause you wouldn't do anything that was illegal, and, I, I didn't wanna get in the middle of that unless I was asked to. Because I didn't wanna just, you know, I don't have any authority to say, hey, both of you commissioners, hush, here's what needs to happen. I mean, I'd, I'd say that, out of all due respect, I don't, or, I won't say, hey, the whole commission needs to hush, here's what needs to happen.
Right.
If I'm, if I'm asked to get into something like that, I will, if I see something coming up, that, that you're about to pass something that state law says you can't, uh, our state constitution does not have a supremacy clause, like the US Constitution does, but there is case law, uh, from the Supreme Court that says, that you have the authority, any local board has the authority that the state legislature gives them. And, in the case that I was talking about tonight, you can't do something, you can't do this, because the state prohibits you from doing it.
Thank you. Communications from the commissioners, Commissioner Bissell?
I started it last time, Mayor, can we start the other end?
I've made a request, Commissioner Bissell, would you like your closing comments, please?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Carroll? I don't have anything tonight. Commissioner Sutton?
Uh, just a couple of things, and I appreciate your comments on requests for ordinances and requests for, um, legal opinions, I think the last one that we just got through, and we all got copies of that, was very lengthy, and I think you did a real good job on it, and I think that request was about eight hundred dollars, wasn't it, roughly?
No, that was, that was the last two.
Well, the last two.
Yeah.
Same subject, last two.
But, it, it could have been a lot longer, I mean, it was...
I'm sure it could have.
That's, that's a, that's a long subject.
Well, you did a good job on it, and I appreciate all your work, and just, as cost factors go, even when we make those requests, it can get expensive. Um, the only other thing, comment I had tonight is, um, I hope that we get the process down right, for the, for the new cars that we need, considering, Chief Harris, you correct me if I'm wrong, that over half of our fleet is out of compliance with TML's recommendation for safety standards, and I do not wanna prolong, either deliberately or in, in, in deliberately, the, getting those cars that we need to secure the safety and security of the citizens and the police department that we have today. So hopefully we can move forward to that, and get it completed in a timely manner, and not have any more delays, if it's done correctly. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing, Mayor.
I have a question, who requested the opinion that you provided us?
The city manager.
Okay, thank you.
And I would, I would just like to say one other thing, that, you know, if, even though I have to run this through the city manager, if I get a request from this board, and my purpose is to serve the city, or a staff member, uh, if I, if I can't do that, I will get back to you, I will not, you know, uh, I will not be rude, and just say, well, I can't do it, uh, and, and let you figure out that at some time, uh, you know, obviously, if you, you request something and you don't ever get it, uh, at some point in time, you'll figure out, I didn't do it. But, uh, I will, I will not do that, if, if it's something that, that gets shot down, it gets shot down, before I spend any time on it, I'm not gonna waste time, and before I spend any time on it, I'll get it verified, and if, if I can't do what you ask, then I will so inform you.
Thank you. The information I'd like to share is, we were represented well in Louisville, Kentucky, the Tennessee-Kentucky idea sharing took place, and it was a retail economic development hosted through TBA, Tennessee and Kentucky Economic Development, and companies around the nation. We were able to, uh, visit with them, and thank many of the new retail and opportunities of what Fairview has experienced, such as TSC, and Autozone, and, O'Reilly's wasn't there, but there were a few that we were able to, Taco Bell Del Mar, or Taco Mar is what the name of it is, that we were able to thank them for investing in our community, and I just wanna encourage the citizens and all that, we were able to encourage and give information out to probably over a hundred and fifty persons, that got local, national information of where Fairview is, and what Fairview has to offer. So we had a very successful trip, the, uh, Economic Task Force did take place, and we did also take place in their little trade show, and that gave us the opportunity to fanfare Fairview, so, hopefully that will have many fruits for that labor, and you'll hear about future things that are looking in the Fairview area. I'd also like to invite public, business owners, and, uh, officials to the next task force meeting on the twenty-third, Monday, at six PM.